Good evening, welcome to the March 27th Herndon Town Council Meeting.
I'll call the meeting to order, so welcome to everyone if you could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So as the Vice Mayor, you can see that the Mayor is not here tonight, so I will be chairing the meeting tonight. First up on our agenda is the approval of minutes, so I'm going to ask for separate motions because we do have three sets of minutes to approve. Is there a motion for the March 6th work session?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes. Is there a motion for the March 13th public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say, oh, discussion on the motion? Forgot about that part. Sorry, discussion on the motion.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Any others? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes. And is there a motion to approve the March 20th work session?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes. Okay. So to start, we have three presentations tonight, starting with a proclamation to recognize Vietnam Veterans Day, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember McKenna to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. "A Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing Vietnam Veterans Day, March 29th, 2018. The Vietnam War began on January 12th, 1962 with Operation Chopper near Saigon, and the last American troops left Vietnam, March 29th, 1973. Through more than a decade of difficult conflict, the dedication and service of our men and women in uniform stood true. These brave patriots faced the line of fire, cast themselves in the harm's way to save a friend, and fought hour after hour, day after day, to preserve the liberties we hold dear. The Vietnam War is a story of service members from different backgrounds, colors, and creeds from all across the country who came together to complete a daunting mission and to serve the country they loved. During this conflict, more than 58,000 brave soldiers laid down their lives at the service of our nation. Eleven years of combat left an imprint on a generation. Thousands of soldiers returned home bearing the battle wounds. However, still more were burdened by the invisible wounds of post-traumatic stress, aged in orange, and memories that would never fade. Yet, in one of the war's most profound tragedies, many of these men and women came home to be shunned or neglected, to face treatment unbefitting their courage and a welcome unworthy of their example. This must never happen again. Therefore, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim March 29th, 2018 as Vietnam Veterans Day, and the Town of Herndon pay tribute to the fallen, the missing, the wounded, the millions who served, and those who anxiously awaited their return, and reaffirm one of our most fundamental obligations, to show all who have worn the uniform of the United States the respect and dignity they deserve. Be it further resolved that the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby call on all citizens to observe Vietnam Veterans Day with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities, and encourage the display of the flag of the United States of America to honor our nation's courageous veterans." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there comments of council? Mr. McKenna?
These proclamations mean a lot to me. My father lost two brothers in World War II, and the Vietnam War I was a little bit detached from, but I can say that, growing up, one of my friend's father passed away from aged in orange, Kenny Nagle. He was in 8th grade, I was in 6th, and he passed away from cancer. That was definitely attributing to that. And later on, I mean, now we're having Vietnam veterans pass away. Friends of mine, Bill Mann, from back in my hometown where I'm from, and also, you look at someone like Wayne Kidwell, in fact. He gave the ultimate sacrifice. In fact, he passed away six years prior to my birth, on March 8th, 1968. So this had a profound effect on Herndon as well, the American Legion's named after him. So I think it's important that we hold days like this in solemn remembrance. A lot of times we get spun up with social media, what's going on outside of us. I think this is a time to reflect upon what people have done for us, the sacrifices they made, so we can stand here today and be American. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments from council? Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. This year, I celebrate my 50th high school reunion, will be in Ocean City, September. If you take 50 years and subtract it from today's date, you get an idea of when it was. A lot of my high school classmates went to Vietnam. And in order to celebrate their dedication, their sacrifice this year, we actually will have a particular celebration at the reunion, so that all the friends can make known to those individuals what we, our thanks for their service. So that's something special that we're doing this year.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. The Vietnam War is the most underappreciated military effort made by American citizens and soldiers, and it's sad when we as a nation cannot take time to reflect every day and be grateful to the members of our military who serve and keep us protected, who serve abroad and protect American ideals and culture and democracy. And I want to take this time to not only thank those who have served in Vietnam, but also those who have served in all of our military armed forces, and especially to my husband, who is a 23-year Army veteran. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
I want to thank the members of the VFW and other veterans who came out today to receive our thanks, and I concur with the statements of my colleagues on the council. I myself am a military spouse and have spent a good deal of time on bases and with people who have survived that conflict, and everything that was said here today rings true. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olum?
Thank you. I was a young child during the Vietnam War, and there was a young man across the street, and he and his brother were older than us and had gone through college and then went in as officers. They were both in the Navy. And I remember missing him so much and all the letters that we would get our school and our churches to send to all the veterans there. So those were my memories, and how thrilled we were when these two young men came back, physically whole, but it did shake them for the rest of their lives. And I moved to this area in 1988, and one of the first things I wanted to do was to go see the Vietnam Memorial. And seeing it on TV or pictures of it did nothing. When you go there, it is absolutely so moving to see all of those names and how that they have kept that up and updated the ones from missing in action to the ones that were actually recovered, and they still keep up with that today. So thank you for your service, and I do remember all those folks. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge former Councilmember Dave Kirby, who specifically was a Vietnam War Vet as well, and personally, a close friend of mine, Dave Tarnoir, who also was lucky to come home from the Vietnam War. With that, we would like to invite down to join us the council, the town manager, the town attorney for the presentation. We also have several folks from Wayne M. Kidwell, Post 184 here. Dave Womack, the commander, is not here tonight, but we do have Bob Thompson, who's the first vice commander, Dan Gillespie, who's the finance officer, and also Tom Finnan is here to join us. We have several veterans in the audience, particularly Jay Hadlock, who is a Vietnam War veteran, and this, of course, is specifically honoring our Vietnam soldiers, who, as Ms. Cunningham said, is really one of the underappreciated, so I'm very happy we do this proclamation. And of course, we'd also love to see Carol Hadlock, town staff, and anyone else in the audience that is serving or has served in the armed forces, please join us for the presentation.
I have to remember the green switch, I think. Not sure if I'm live or not. Is it a green one and a red one? Red one. We'll go loud enough, anyway. We appreciate so much the Town of Herndon and what they do for us and all veterans in this town. It doesn't matter who the composition of the council has been over the years, it's always the same thought patterns that emanate through the whole chamber relative to either it's Veterans, VA, Veterans Day itself, or it's Memorial Day, whatever, and Vietnam Veterans Day this year, and POW Mia Day. You fly the POW Mia flag on all the appropriate days throughout the town, so it's always a joy to come in here, even though we're here for sad purposes most of the time. We're so proud of the support we get from the town, and we hope that we'll continue to see that over the years and that you continue to come out and see our Avenue of Flags when the weather allows us to fly them. So thank you once more for everybody who's ever served.
Thank you so much. And Jay?
Jay Hadlock, 515 Alabama Drive. Feel like I give a travelogue when I come before you once a year. Fifty years ago, I was in the Trang, South Vietnam, with 2/3 of a military police company that I commanded. 1/3 of them was already up in Phu Bai, which was south of the city of Hoi. I was past halfway mark, which was a nice thing to enjoy. I don't think about it too much anymore. I had a very nice talk with my family over Thanksgiving, complete with photos. First time I'd ever talked about my service with, especially my daughters, and they were appreciative of that, as well as my granddaughter. And I really appreciate what the town does and what Dave Kirby did when he proposed this proclamation and to honor this day, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for sharing your living history. We need you to keep sharing that with your family and with the rest of us. Next, we have a proclamation to recognize distracted driving awareness month, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Olum to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. This is a town proclamation recognizing distracted driving awareness month, April 2018. Distracted driving is an activity that could divert a driver's attention away from the primary task of driving a vehicle. All distraction endanger the driver's, passengers', and bystander's safety. According to the National Highway Safety Administration, in 2015, 3,477 lives were lost in distraction-affected crashes, while an estimated 390,000 people were involved in, injured in crashes involving distracted drivers. Engaging in visual manual subtask associated with the use of handheld phones and other portable devices increases the risk of getting into a crash by three times, while texting and driving increases the risk for a crash by 23 times. Considering the significant risk, the best way to end distracted driving is by educating all Americans about the dangers inherent with these behaviors. Therefore, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the month of April, 2018, as Distracted Driving Awareness Month in the Town of Herndon. Support the Herndon Police Department in raising awareness about distracted driving and encourage education about the significant dangers of distracted driving, improving highway safety for all citizens and visitors in the Herndon, Virginia area. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there comments from council? Ms. Olum?
Yes, thank you. This is always a pretty sad day for me. We did finally pass some legislation on this. I think it was 2012 or 13, and it was after a young man named Kyle Riley, who was a frequent visitor of my home and a dear friend of my son Matt's. They both graduated in 2010 from Herndon High, and in 2011, when he was home after his freshman year, he was killed while pushing his car that had stalled to the side of the road. He had his flashers on, and he was hit by a driver who was not drunk. They were distracted, and there was nothing that could be done. So we have an attorney that is on the House of Delegates, and they took that forward, got surveilled, so that's when that finally got passed. So if you do have a cellphone, they do have an app, and I turn it on. Once you turn it on, whenever you get in your car and drive, if someone texts me, I don't even get a ping. It goes directly in, and then I'll see a message when I get to where I'm going, and it says, "I'm driving now, I can't reply." So people know that I'm driving. I do have Bluetooth, so if I got a call and I want to take it, I can see it on the radio and just punch the button. But it is so important, because you're more likely to have a wreck by texting than you are by being inebriated. So it is very serious business. Please, don't text and drive. The person that hit Kyle will have to live with that for the rest of their lives, and they were only in their 30s, so they've got a long road ahead of them of guilt for killing a 19-year-old. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments of council?
I would just add, so thank you for HPD and for making sure that we acknowledge this and remind citizens and business owners and folks all around town and beyond to just pay close attention. I think often there's the joke that women can multitask better than men, and the fact is, nobody can multitask. Your brain switches from one activity to the other, so if you're switching to the activity of texting, you are not focused on driving. And just listening to those statistics, that you're 23 times more likely to get in a car accident when you're texting should be enough for all of us and a great reminder that it's not worth it. With that, I would like to invite down the council, the town manager, the town attorney, of course, Chief de Board, Sergeant Galpin's here, Captain Thunman if he's here, and any
Madam Vice Mayor, excuse me, Town Council. Town Attorney, Town Manager, thank you for having us. Over the last two years, the United States has seen the largest percentage increase of traffic fatalities in 51 years. Much of this increase is attributed to distracted driving. More than 40,000 people were killed in our nation's roadways last year, and distracted driving was a major contributor to this. While many factors contribute to traffic accidents, the increased risk associated with distracted driving, particularly driving when texting, is growing. In addition to mobile phones, route navigation, in-vehicle internet, and other technologies, the many distractions for drivers continues to increase, especially for our young drivers. It's important that the Herndon Police Department, along with our community, increase its efforts and educate the others about the dangers and consequences of distracted driving. So during the month of April, the Herndon Police Department will closely monitor the roadways to identify the distracted driving violations, and members of the community are encouraged to speak with family, friends about the increased hazards and report distracted driving behaviors to the Herndon Police Department or your local police agency. You can also follow our safety tips weekly on our Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter pages. Thank you very much for having us and your support for this.
Thank you, Sergeant Galpin. Thanks, Chief. Next is our proclamation to recognize Local Government Education Week, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Cunningham to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. "A Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing Local Government Education Week, April 1 through April 7, 2018. On February 29, 2012, the Virginia General Assembly designated the first week of April as Local Government Education Week throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. This week was selected because on April 2nd, 1908, the council manager form of government was created in the city of Stanton, Virginia. During Local Government Education Week, municipalities throughout the Commonwealth are recognized for the valuable services provided to the residents and communities they serve. Therefore, the Mayor and the Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the week of April 1 through April 7, 2018, as Local Government Education Week in the Town of Herndon. Express appreciation to the town staff for the vital role they play in educating our community through initiatives such as youth and citizen police academies, national night out, participation in local school activities, providing internship opportunities to students, promoting career opportunities at the town, safety, building, and home maintenance workshops, enforcement of state and local laws, and community meetings on matters of importance to our citizens. Further, the Mayor and the Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby express gratitude to the town staff for their dedication to our residents. Recognize that citizen services including law enforcement, public health and safety, recreation, and educating local children are best delivered at the local level, and encourage increased civic education and engagement to strengthen our sense of community throughout Herndon, both during Local Government Education Week and throughout the year." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there comments from council? Ms. Cunningham?
One of the things that we're so blessed with is having a wonderful staff. You will hear this from every council member that has ever sat up here, ever since the first of us ever got elected, way back when. We don't run this town. This town is run by our top-notch staff, and the reason why we get such great service is they love to be here, helping our citizens and our residents and our business make a community and make this hometown the wonderful place it is. So you will hear us thank staff incessantly, because they make it easy for us to do our jobs. They make it easy for you to have clean streets, safe streets, good neighborhoods, good schools, wonderful recreational activities. The list goes on and on. So take a moment to learn about some of the departments you might not know about, and don't forget to thank some of the wonderful folks that are working hard for you every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments of council? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, excuse me. I am very excited about this and always appreciative of staff and what they do, and earlier, or actually last year, when we started in December of last year, the Herndon Youth Advisory Council, which its sole mission is to educate the youth in regards to how local government works, and the staff taking their time and helping us out with that. It's just a great feeling that reaching out and the outreach that we're doing, one of our students, in fact, is in the audience tonight, but it's just a good feeling to know that we have a staff that's willing to not only do the job that's asked of them, but they go outside the box and help us out in other ways as well. So very much appreciative.
Excellent. Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Olum?
Yeah, one of the things that I was really impressed with when I started noticing the Herndon Police Department doing it was helping new parents in how to put a car safety seat in the car properly. That was one of my first jobs right out of graduate school. Tennessee had passed the first child safety seat law, and so we had a safety seat program, and I was the child safety educator. But it's amazing how many people have accidents, and if it weren't for our police department, they probably wouldn't know how to use them. And then there's the bike rodeo that they do periodically to help children on how to ride their bikes safely, and then our police and numerous other staff go to organizations such as Rotary to educate them on what's going on in the town, and people are always just amazed. We aren't, because we live here, but it's a great billboard to let people know, because people are just jealous. They're dying to move to Herdons. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments of council? I'd like to recognize Town Manager Bill Ashton for comments and to call on staff to be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. It always strikes me that we spend a lot of time talking about national politics and what's going on in the world, and you, as we well know, when it's election day and it's a national election, you get a higher turnout than in the local elections. But the interesting thing here, for each person in this room, local government has touched your lives this week in many, many different ways. We plowed your streets this week. We picked up your trash this week. You turned on a faucet and water came out this week. Thank you, Tammy Chastain and her fine staff at the town shop for all of those things. We patrolled the streets. Thank you, Chief de Board. We provided recreation services to numerous people and programs to kids, especially this spring break with the kids over at the community center. Thank you, Cindy Roder and her staff. Also this week, we were working with homeowners on building projects, and we're working with developers on new ideas in the town. Thank you to John Irish and his staff in Public Works, and Lisa Gillar and her staff in CD that make all that stuff happen. And during all of this, we're communicating with you, telling you all the great things that we're doing, all the things we're trying to do. And Curtis, thank you for your efforts in that end, to those ends. Local government is touching you every day, and this is just a great opportunity to recognize those things and let folks know just how important local government is to a great community. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Absolutely. So with that, I'd like to invite down for the presentation, the whole council, town manager, town attorney, and any of the staff that's in the room that we just discussed. I gave that to Ms. Curtis, then you can advertise it on our Facebook page or something. So are there comments from the town manager? Oh, and I don't even have a back-to-back seat yet, I'm sorry. I didn't even, getting ahead of myself. Are there comments from council? Councilmember Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Just yesterday evening, Councilmember Olum and I attended a Monday, Metro Monday meeting over at, that was held about the Innovation Station. That's the stations, one of the two stations that's closest to Herndon, and it was great to see representatives from both Fairfax County and Loudoun County together talking about Innovation Station and the different development that's going to happen around it. So that was a great meeting and something that we should be proud of. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember McKenna?
Just real quick, I had a phone call last Friday from a friend of mine that works in Arlington County. He's going for his Masters in Public Administration at George Mason, and he had to study the Herndon's last year's budget, last fiscal year's budget, and asked me about seven questions, and I think I passed the test. But the one thing he did say, because again, he works on budgets and things of that matter, he was very impressed with the logical flow. A lot of the questions that he had while he was looking at it were answered as time went on, and I said, you know, wait until this year's budget, and he also saw some of the PDFs, so kudos to the financial staff in regards to the job that they did. Made my life a lot easier. Instead of a gotcha moment, it was like, yeah, that's right, we do that. So thank you.
Amen to that. Councilmember Cunningham?
Thank you. Just coming off the Local Government Week, I would encourage you, if you have not had an opportunity to check out some of the new events over at Parks and Recs Department, please do so. This weekend will be our Easter egg hunt. We're hoping that the weather is a little bit... bit nicer for that and there won't be so much snow for the Easter bunny to hide all the eggs. So check out hernandva.gov and go to upcoming events. You'll see all sorts of neat stuff that's coming up. So save the date for the Easter egg hunt, Running Meat Park cleanup coming April 21st and all sorts of other good things brought to you by your local government.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedrichs?
I just wanted to let you all know that I had the opportunity to meet with staff recently to, we have a grant oversight committee that's working on South Eldon Street, a project quite further down the line. I also wanted to do a quick shout out, this is a national level thing, the March for Our Lives that happened downtown. One of the things that Councilmember McKenna has been working on, as you know, is the Youth Advisory Committee. And I think all of these things are helping us as a nation. The more our youth are involved and understand that their voice is important, that they speak up and that they be heard, I think the better we become as a nation. So I want to just mention Councilmember McKenna's work again, but also I was so inspired by these young people and how articulate they were and how much they had thought this through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olem?
Yes, thank you. Number one, I'm so excited. I have e-filed my taxes, so I am done.
Jealous.
Every year I wait until the last minute, but this year I said, I'm going to do it early and then I can go to the movies, you know, the 14th. I too was very impressed by the young people this weekend from Florida that organized a march. And just to keep it in perspective, since 1999 when Colin Biden happened, there had been 187,000 students exposed to gun violence in this country. And the picture on the post, I mean, the number of people marching was just phenomenal. The young people back during the Vietnam era came out and they made change happen. You had all these young people in college going to war that couldn't even vote or buy a drink. So they went out and made things happen. I am very optimistic that finally we're going to do something positive with the energy that these young people have brought forward. And I hope that they're going to get a time to take care of themselves because it's been a little over five, six weeks and they haven't stopped. They have not had time to grieve for classmates and siblings and parents that showed up whose children died. So they've got a long way to go, just like the individuals that were here tonight that we recognized for the Vietnam War. They have been through the war too. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will just add the, as Councilmember Cunningham mentioned, it is Easter this weekend for those who celebrate on Sunday. So the town is hosting the egg hunt. That's on the town green from 9:30 to 11:30. There's lots of other cool stuff happening. And they have, according to age, so there'll be something for all the kids. And then Spring Cleanup Week. So no one mentioned that, I just want to make sure. There's the Townwide Annual Spring Cleanup. Takes place the week of April 9th to the 13th. So that provides an opportunity for residents to get rid of those large bulky items. We do this twice a year. You can leave them at your curbs for pickup on your same scheduled trash day that you normally do. So that's the week of April 9th to the 13th. We will now move to comments from the audience. So the next portion is to invite forward any individual to address the council on any matter that is not a public hearing. So of the two public hearing items, I'll call those separately. But if you have any comments to make either related to the consent agenda or something not on the agenda at all, this would be your time to do it. Speakers have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. The green light will come on and the red light will come on 30 seconds before your time is up to wrap up. And Meredith, come on down.
Meredith Keppel, 921 Barton Oaks. I actually have a pledge that I am hoping the mayor will sign, so I'm going to go ahead and give my comments without her present in hopes that she will be able to talk to me later. I'm here today to ask you to take a stance against gun violence and illegal guns in Herndon. Herndon has long been a forward-thinking small town, a model of progress, diverse community. It's true that Virginia towns can't pass legislation, but they can pledge to pursue the fullest extent of the law against those who trade or use guns illegally. And they can pledge to advocate on behalf of their most vulnerable constituents. The Mayor's Against Illegal Guns pledge is a bipartisan effort to better enforce existing laws and has nothing to do with passing new laws. Rather, by signing it, you demonstrate your commitment to thorough background checks, maximum sentencing for illegal gun sales, coordinated efforts between local, state and federal agencies, and advocacy for communities most vulnerable to gun violence. We're 86 days into 2018 and according to the gun violence archives, there have already been 3,149 deaths due to gun violence in our country. 732 of those dead, or just over 23%, were under the age of 18. In fact, I collected these statistics last Friday, so it's actually higher because on average, seven children are killed every day in the US. And previously, while this would have bothered me, it wouldn't have alarmed me because I grew up in Herndon and I know, I know that Herndon is a safe, small town, except so was Parkland, Florida, until a gunman walked into Marjory Stoneman Douglas with an AR-14, AR-15 assault rifle and killed 17 people in 6 minutes and 23 seconds on February 14, 2018. So I wonder every time my little brother walks out the door, if today's the day that I'll get a frantic "I love you" text as he hides in the closet. I wonder at his ability, not the ability of every student in our nation right now, to go to school every day knowing that it has the potential to become a battleground. That fear, that gut-wrenching anxiety is something I've never wished on my deepest enemy, much less my beloved community of Herndon. I know many of you, so I know that this is something that alarms you too. I know that all of us want our town, our school and our kids to be safe. No one is advocating for the death of innocent lives. So we have to do something about it because thoughts and prayers are no longer enough. So Town Council, Mayor Merkel, I am asking for your advocacy because we need your advocacy. We need your support and we need your pledge. Thank you very much.
Thank you Meredith. That was very powerful. Any other comments from the audience?
I have to forgive me, I'm a little slow. I'm Sherri Blanton, 549 Florida Avenue. I'm just recovering from a broken leg, so getting better. But I was at the march on Saturday and I joined Moms Demand Action right after Sandy Hook. I thought that Virginia Tech would have done it and then Sandy Hook happened and I thought that definitely should have done it, but it didn't. But maybe now that these kids from Florida are involved, maybe now's the time. And I know we can't, you know, I support the Second Amendment, but part of it does say well-regulated. And that's all we're asking for, sensible regulations. My daughters told me because of the Washington Sniper, they had the lockdown drills and our children shouldn't have to go through that. It's not right. It's traumatizing. So thank you for listening.
Thank you Sherri. Are there other comments from the audience? Okay, with that, we will move, thank you for your comments. We will move to our first public hearing, which is Ordinance 180, 180-09, to grant a six-year franchise extension to the Program Executive Office Enterprise Information Systems, Project Manager Defense Communications and Army Transmission Systems Technology Applications Office, formerly the United States Army Corps of Engineers, for the location of telecommunications facilities within the town's public streets and public places. I will open the public hearing and recognize Tammy Chastain for the staff report.
Good evening. I'll make sure I do this one right this time. So this is a six-year extension to their franchise. There were some adjustments as well regarding linear footage, which has now been corrected to 14,546 linear feet. But this is simply a six-year extension to their franchise.
With a name change?
With a name change.
Yes.
A much longer name change, yes.
Excellent. Are there questions of council? I know we talked about this last week. Any other questions? Ms. Friedrichs?
Is there any reason that we should be concerned about this or is this...
No, there's not. This is, this actually is to get them through until they transition to another Army entity, back to the Corps actually, to, that's going to be working on this. So this is basically just to get us to where they're going to be working on it, so, yeah.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions, I mean? So I want to make sure I announce that the town has received one bid from the Program Executive Office Enterprise Information Systems, Project Manager Defense Communications and Army Transmission Systems Technology Applications Office, which has been entered into the record. Ms. Chastain, have we received any additional bids?
No ma'am.
Okay. So hearing none, I will close the bidding process. This is a public hearing and I would invite the applicant or the applicant's agent forward at this time to address the council. Hello?
Ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you.
My name is John Swart. I'm the director of, I'll just keep it simple, P-E-O-E-I-S-D-C-A-T-S-T-A-O.
Very good.
Off that.
That's what I needed.
And as Tammy said, this is simply a renewal of the existing franchise for six years or a total of three more years. And simply to maintain the existing infrastructure. There will be some minor adjustments to accommodate the road construction projects that are ongoing and some upgrades to, for the fiber that we have existing, but it is not an expansion of the project.
Okay. Are there questions of the applicant? Ms. Friedrichs?
So is this going to involve any digging up of roads or, I'm not sure.
Only to make adjustments based on the existing road construction projects. There are, there are three. One is the, sorry, okay. One is the Van Buren, the widening of Van Buren Street. The other is, another is the intersection of Herndon Parkway and Van Buren Street and the other, the third is the intersection work at Spring Street and Herndon Parkway. So the only digging will be involved will be to accommodate those existing road construction projects.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you sir. I may call you back, but you're, we're good for now. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing and I'd like to call on if there are any questions or comments from the audience. This is pretty straightforward, but by all means, want to give you the opportunity. So given that, I'm going to close the public hearing and I will move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor? I'm just going to call you mayor for the day. I move approval of Ordinance 18-0-09.
Second. Thank you. So we have the motion by Councilmember Olem, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Is there discussion on the motion? All, any discussion?
Yes, I just want to thank staff for the wonderful report you did during the work session. You answered all my questions and I think everyone else's. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes 6-0. Thank you so much. So next, we will move to our second public hearing item, which is Ordinance 18-0-08, to consider zoning ordinance text amendment, ZODA, number 1704, to amend and reenact Chapter 78 zoning regarding the production of craft beer by special exception. Please note that this item was continued from our March 13th public hearing. Council, sorry, comments received by council on this item have been entered into the record. Before I get started, I do want to remind everyone that while we do have an existing brewery in town that brought this matter to our attention, this matter is not specific to that brewery. This does involve most, almost every zoning district in town, so it's not specific just to that brewery. Tonight, we are discussing a zoning ordinance text amendment about increasing the production of craft beer throughout the town. And with that, I will open the public hearing and I'd like to call on Ms. Gillar for additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Lisa Gillar, Director of Community Development. This particular zoning text amendment, as you mentioned, does cover several different districts. It includes the CC, CS, ONLI, PDB, PDDD, and PDTD zoning districts. Currently, the ordinance allows a maximum of 5,000 barrels per year to be produced by a brewery in town. In all those districts, it's allowed by right, except in the ONLI, currently it's requiring a special exception. The applicant in the proposed zoning text amendment you have before you is proposing a limit of 15,000 be allowed by special exception in all those zoning districts with further increase up to 25,000 outside the Herndon Parkway in the PDB district. In both cases, that would be by special exception, so conditions could be imposed. The Planning Commission was, in their discussion, was uncomfortable with this type of use, particularly in the downtown and some of our other commercial areas. They did recommend the ordinance though with an increase to 6,000 with the granting of a special exception and up to 20,000 with the granting of a special exception outside the Herndon Parkway. Staff recommended 10,000 with a special exception to provide incentive, 20,000 outside the Herndon Parkway with a, with a special exception. The staff is currently available to answer any questions you may have. I know we've discussed this at a previous public hearing as well as two work sessions. So unless you wish to have additional information, I will leave it at that.
That's great. Are there questions of council? I know we have had lots of discussion on this. Thank you. So again, this is a public hearing, so I am happy to take questions or comments from the audience. Again, same, same rules apply, but if anyone wants to make a comment or question on this from the audience, feel free to come up, state your name and address for the record and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeff Smith, 1,001 Trinity Gate. Just want to say, first of all, I am a brewer. I'm very pro brewery. I've been a home brewer for 15 years now, volunteered at several small breweries as they started up. I want to say I'm very much in favor of the 25,000 barrel increase. The thing that I'm not a big fan of is the 15,000 barrel increase, specifically in the middle of the downtown area. It seems like it's a very large production facility that's right in the heart of our downtown. It's just not what I personally see our downtown should be. I see our downtown as something where we have a nice brewery that you can go to and grab, grab a beer, have a good afternoon with some friends, not a larger production facility. And that's what I see when you're talking about 15,000 barrels a year. To put that in perspective, that's essentially doing one gasoline tanker truck full of beer every week. Depending on your fermentation time, if you do two weeks, that means you're having to store two tanker trucks worth of beer at that facility. I just don't see places in the middle of our downtown that have that size and that's just two weeks. I know the applicant was saying that they want to do their sours there. Those take months. I don't know how that would be there, but I, and I know this isn't about the applicant and I'm a big fan of the applicant. I'm going to go cheat on my low carb diet tonight with one of their IPAs. That's just some of my general concerns. There's the traffic issue. There's going to be truck traffic coming in and out. If you're doing all of your brewing there, you're going to have your grain going in, grain coming out. You've got your beer coming out, hopefully. So those are just some of my concerns. So, thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, Town Council, my apologies, I'm not as well dressed as him. I just came off an airplane here, so I'm not going to address the smell. I know that was one of the concerns.
Can you start with your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Charles Williams, 421 Queens Row Street.
Thanks Charles.
And as I said, I'm not going to address the smell. I know that was one of the concerns. And as the previous person spoke, I'm also a big fan of breweries and beer, but I wanted to give you guys an idea of what 15,000 barrels of beer look like. And I extrapolated all these numbers from Google and I challenge anybody to go and do their own research and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But 15,000 barrels of beer is 4,950,000 12-ounce cans of beer. A steady run, assuming a steady output, is 412,500 cans of beer a month. That's a lot of beer. When you look at what they do, they're going to have a brew house and they're going to have a tasting area, so some of that beer will be consumed onsite, on-site. have a tasting area, so some of that beer would be consumed off-site, onsite, some of it would go into kegs. But assuming all this beer, because this isn't just about them, it's about brewing inside the Parkway, assuming you were purely production, that would be 200 standard pallets in a 50-foot tractor-trailer would require seven tractor-trailers a month to get that beer out of there. I just, I think it's a lofty goal. I don't see it with inside the Parkway. Outside the Parkway, you know, if they can make it work in a business park, by all means, I'm all for it. But seven tractor-trailers a month, 50-foot tractor-trailers is a lot of beer. And then from a raw material standpoint, just outside the Parkway, if my notes are right, we are talking about 1.7 million pounds of grain, and this number varies greatly. Jeff could have talked to this, but depending on what type of beer you brew and what, how long and your alcohol content, that number could vary. But that's 1 in a, 1.7 million pounds of grain, which is 857 tons of grain. And after that's produced, that number can double by weight, so that's about 3 million pounds of spent grain that would need to be hauled out of there by local farmers. Generally, local farmers take it for cattle feed. So, I think this is a really lofty goal. I'm all for supporting it, but I don't think in the current state, either the recommendation by the Planning Commission or the staff is realistic for inside the town of Herndon's, inside Herndon Parkway. One final thing is that outside the, outside the Parkway, if they do all their mashing at that location, it's equivalent water of 50 multi-unit, 50, 50 housing multi-unit dwelling facilities. So, it's a lot of water they're going to consume. So, it's a lofty goal. I'm all for supporting beer, but I don't think this is right for inside the Parkway.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments from the audience on this public hearing? Ms. Hutchinson?
Hi, Connie Hutchinson, 1019 Van Buren Street. I watched your last public hearing on TV, HCTV, and I had to come tonight because I was really surprised to see that what seemed like the majority of counsel, ready to tell businesses in Herndon that you can't grow, that you can't expand. And that's very disheartening to me. I think the idea that, that this would be with a special exception limits the fear that you seem to have about, well, this could just proliferate and be all over town everywhere. It's not, with a special exception, you have the ability to, to make those special exceptions fit your particular situation. So, I'm here to say I don't understand why this ordinance ever had any kind of limit. I think that was probably a mistake on the town's part. If you wanted to only have brew pubs downtown, a small, smaller brew pub atmosphere, then that's the way the original ordinance should have been written, but it wasn't. One of the gentlemen that spoke, I think it was, his name was Kai, I want to quote what he said, since I see they're not here tonight. I don't know if that means they've given up and are thinking about moving out of town, as that was one of their concerns. But I want to quote a little bit of what he said, since I only have three minutes. Kai said, "As far as a free economy goes, as far as an economic value to the town, it seems asinine to think about limiting this. It was almost deafening to us, Aslan, that you would be telling us, 'No, don't make money for us, don't grow your business in Herndon.'" Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments from the audience on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Davidson?
Yes. I move to deny Ordinance 18-0-08 to consider zoning ordinance text amendment, ZODA, number 17-04.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny the zoning ordinance, the ZODA, made by Councilmember Davidson, seconded by Councilmember Friedrichs. Is there discussion on the motion? And I know there is. Councilmember Davidson?
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and council for passing the deferral of this ordinance that I moved at the last public session. I have researched the zoning amendment with the town attorney, with the Director of Community Development, and with the authors of the amendment. The council discussed it in detail at the last council work session. A lot of effort has gone into consideration of this ordinance. Zoning decisions are among the most important responsibilities of local governments. The decisions we make impact the lives of everyone in town. This zoning ordinance text amendment and all three proposed options impact six different zoning districts in Herndon. This could be a sweeping change across town with many possible unintended consequences. I believe that these are serious enough to deny this amendment. I look forward to staff taking a professional look at having breweries in the various zoning districts in town. The immediate reason for considering these changes was to build a larger brewery in downtown than is currently allowed under the ordinance. I have talked directly with the co-founders of Aslan Brewery. As related to me, their plans have changed, making this amendment unnecessary for their purposes. I welcome the taproom and small production facility they are currently building on Eldon Street as a valuable addition to the downtown that will encourage more visitors to come to Herndon. For these reasons, I will vote to deny this ordinance.
Thank you. Other comments from counsel? Ms. Friedrichs?
I'm in favor of expanding business, and I don't see any reason to, to prevent anybody from, from reaching their potential as far as business is concerned, but I believe that this ordinance needs to be looked at from the beginning. So, as has been brought up by a number of people, the amounts don't make sense, 15,000 barrels in the downtown by right, or even by special exception, is an awful lot. So, I think we need to go back, we need to reconsider this. And in the work session last week, we discussed, we spoke to staff and asked them to come up with an alternate ordinance for us to look at as soon as humanly possible. So, I think that this is, I know it's going to seem disappointing to some people, but in fact, I think this is the best option. This gives us the chance to look at this again from zero, figure out what we need to do, and have, be proactive rather than reactive, as I think Councilmember Cunningham would say. We want our downtown to be the best possible downtown, and it's our responsibility to make sure that it works well for businesses and for the people that we are hoping to appeal to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments of counsel? Councilmember McKenna?
Yeah, so I did speak to the applicant last week, and based upon that and some other things, I did a lot of my own independent research on this over the past 10 or 11 days. I learned a lot in the, in the last few weeks in regards to this, everything from three-tier, the three-tier distribution model versus tasting room sales, shelf stability, going from microbrewery to regional brewery by definition. I learned all of it. But it's not relevant to the question at hand, which the ordinance allows for either 15,000 barrels to be brewed in commercial areas in town and 25,000 outside the Parkway. I spoke to about, I think it was nine brewers in total. One brewer did emphatically come out for the ordinance. I put their information in a manner of public record. But the other brewers didn't speak to the ordinance, rather to the capacity, square footage, and what would be necessary to run with a 15,000 and 25,000 barrel limit option for a facility. What I found interesting in my conversations I had, especially was with the representatives from Star Hill. I don't know if some of you know, but Star Hill is the largest independent brewery in the state. It was devil's backbone. They were acquired by Anheuser-Busch, so they no longer have the title. They stated that Charlottesville actually passed an ordinance to raise the brewing capacity from 15,000 barrels to unlimited back in 2015 on December 21st. I actually reached out to the town, or the city manager, never got back to me, but I was okay. I looked through that ordinance and also spoke with the person from Star Hill. They started back in 1999 at the Star Hill Music Hall, a historic storefront in, on Main Street in downtown Charlottesville. What had happened, in fact, it was the home of the first craft brewing location in the state, formerly known as Blue Ridge Brewing Company. So, just some historical perspective there. They moved in the summer of 2005 from their downtown facility to a larger facility in Crawze, which was the old ConAgra Building food plant that's located, and actually their facility is the current old ConAgra Building. They have no interest in moving back to Charlottesville because the footprint they have makes sense for their business because the distribution model, transportation concerns, and traffic associated with the town itself in Charlottesville just didn't make sense to them. So, I thought that was interesting. And that's kind of where my head is in regards to the brewing capacity and why I'm leaning towards denial, not because I just, it's, it's a lot to deal with. This ordinance has nothing to do with the applicant or what their plans may or may not be. It is a question of whether or not Herndon has the capacity to house breweries, which by definition would be just under the limit for microbrewing. In case you're wondering, a microbrewery by definition is 15,000 barrels or less. So, outside of Herndon Parkway would be considered a regional brewery because it'd be from 15,000 to 6 million barrels. I honestly do not think, based on my conversation I've had with other brewers, we don't have the bandwidth or capacity downtown to sustain the ordinance because this is not for one single brewery, but it would be zoned for all commercial areas and could completely change the landscape of the town with unintended consequences. I think there is a right size to this, accordingly, for the capacity of Herndon, and therefore, regretfully, I'm in favor of denying this ordinance. But again, we're looking forward to find something that is right-sized for Herndon because there's just a lot of things that happen. I just think a total of 15,000 downtown and 25,000 out, we have to right-size that. So, that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments of counsel? Ms. Cunningham?
Just concurring with my colleagues on counsel, I'm not in favor of us passing ZODAs on a reactive basis, when we really need to be thinking out 10, 20, 30 years for what's really best for the town, the business community, and the residents. So, you'll hear us say that word "right sizing." The number of barrels requested in some of the proposed language was, in some ways, fairly arbitrary and did not really take into account how and where we want to grow our businesses. We're very supportive of our businesses, we're welcoming, we're looking forward to welcoming a lot of new businesses in the downtown, but we need to make sure it works for all of us. And so, we do want staff to work to right-size this and other land use issues as we go forward and our town continues to be an attractive place to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Councilmember Olm?
Thank you. I support denying this. I think the 5,000 is more than enough in the downtown. I don't think we want to go to a production that large in the downtown because of statements that the individuals that came forth and spoke tonight. When I was doing my research on it and seeing the size of facilities that were producing anywhere from 5,000 to 15,000 barrels, it was way more than I think we would want that type of truck traffic added to the downtown. Any type of business you have, you're going to have big trucks coming in to bring in your food for the restaurants and so forth. But I don't think a commercial facility of that size would be appropriate in the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think I got everyone's feedback. I would just add, I mean, this is certainly, we have something we have discussed for several weeks now, and actually longer, since it was first brought up to the Planning Commission in December. And this is a tough one, and this is certainly one we have wrestled with. I know you're only, if you're only kind of seeing the public hearing, maybe you don't know all the behind the scenes, but as Mr. McKenna said, he's done a ton of research. We've had lengthy discussions at work sessions, we've had lengthy discussions one-on-one, and separately, we've met with the applicant, since they are, you know, an example of a brewery in town. And again, this is intended for any potential brewery or business who would want to come to town and potentially have a beer production facility. So, this is a tough one in that it's certainly, the council does, and I'll speak for myself, we have no intention of limiting someone's business potential. However, our role up here is that we are implementing policies that do affect the entire town. They affect other businesses, and they affect, and there are ramifications with a business like this, right? There are ramifications that are different than if you're going to open a furniture shop. There are different things to consider that do have an impact on other businesses, as we've heard at the last public hearing and, and the Planning Commission. And so, that is the reason why it requires some thoughtful zoning on our part to make sure that we are factoring in not only the applicant, future potential beer producers, and the other fellow businesses and residents in town that, that would be potentially impacted by this. Certainly, we're, well, again, I'll speak for myself and say, this particular applicant, I think, has done an amazing job, but I think they're phenomenal business. I'm super proud that they're in town. I'm proud that they sponsor things like Jambrew, and so I certainly hope they continue to be an important part of the town, both at their Sunset Business Park location and at their downtown location, which they're in the works on finalizing. So, I hope that all continues. But I do think, as Ms. Friedrichs said, this is really, bringing this forward and with the staff's work and the Planning Commission's work has really highlighted for us what we need to do to review this, to make sure we have right-sized it, we have factored in all those, those things, and looking at the space we have to offer, right? Is there a space? We don't have the same types of spaces that you have in Sterling or other locations, even in Fairfax County, where you can really have a true production facility, which is really, what, 15,000 or 25,000 barrels? Those are production-level facilities, and there's not necessarily that space in anywhere in our 4.2 square miles with existing structures. So, with all that in mind, I also support the denial, but, but please note that this is not the end of this, right? That we will, we are continuing this discussion. As we've mentioned, staff is continuing to review this. We still welcome public comments, both from the applicant, from other potential producers that want to move to town. We welcome your comments and discussion to reach out to us. So, with that, I will call the question, and again, this is to deny zoning ordinance text amendment, ZODA 1704. All those in favor? And again, if you say in favor, you're in favor of denying it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. And so, that ZODA amendment has been denied. All right, our last item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 11 to 13?
So moved.
Okay. So moved by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Olm. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes. So, this concludes our agenda.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Excellent, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:07. Thank you, everyone.